You faces, folks who may not be from El Paso and so to you I say welcome to our community. We're so grateful that you're here in El Paso, hope that you also have time to visit Ciudad Juarez, a part of our community. And to all of you I just want to say thank you. I think that your work, your labors, your advocacy, so often goes unsung and is so important. And I have been fortunate enough to witness that work and be able to appreciate it. Last year, in the hysteria that followed the refugees and asylum seekers from northern triangle countries of Central America, I had a chance to see organizations in this community, Catholic organizations and non-Catholic organizations alike, without a federal penny of assistance, help hundreds and thousands of families in their most vulnerable state get the help, the resources, the medicine, the clothing, the warm showers, the connection to their families deeper than entirely the United States, and saw the extraordinary difference that they made in the lives of those people. I traveled twice to Artesia, which served as a family detention camp. It's about a three-hour drive from here. El Paso is the closest community, and that probably is not by accident. And met the remarkable volunteers, again, both from the Diocese to Catholic organizations and from other organizations, volunteering to help those migrant families, all of them mothers without husbands with very young children in a strange land where they didn't speak the language, incredibly vulnerable and frightened, and having the toughest times I can imagine. And it was these volunteers, volunteers such as yourself and organizations such as yours, that really made the most important difference in those young families' lives. And so I thank you for your work, and just want to thank you in advance for the work that you continue to do, and for being here to strengthen the bonds that you have between the two organizations, and also for the respect that you pay to us here in El Paso and Ciudad Juarez in learning from our experience and hopefully applying it to the work that you're doing in other parts of the country. As Fernando said, I have the privilege of introducing a piece of legislation to improve conditions for those of us who live on the US-Mexico border, for those who live on the Canadian-US border, for the families and migrants and refugees and asylum seekers who cross that border and come into our communities. But it was a bill, to be honest with you, and it's difficult for me as a politician to do this, it's a bill that really I did not write, and I think Representative Pierce would agree. We have the privilege of introducing this piece of legislation, but it was really written by the communities that we represent in West Texas and in Southern Mexico. Dr. Hayman from University of Texas at El Paso, Fernando and his team at Border Network for Human Rights, the American Civil Liberties Union, believe it or not, the National Border Patrol Council, individuals on the border whose life experience and expertise far exceeds anything that can be found in Washington DC, use that perspective to try to shape the policy that will disproportionately impact them and their neighbors. And out of that, we constructed a piece of legislation that acknowledges something that I've known for all of my life, and for those of we who are visiting El Paso for the first time, I hope you also find it true. We are lucky enough to live in the most extraordinary community anywhere in the world. Three million people in Southern Mexico, West Texas, and Northern Chihuahua, who share the same resources, the same air, the same water, who have family connections that extend across all three states and two nations, where we see every year 30 million documented crossings between the United States and Mexico here in Ciudad Juarez and El Paso, a local economy that is completely interdependent and inseparable, and a shared culture and history that is the source of our strength. If you removed any half from the other, that community left on its own would wither on the line. You don't have to travel too far from here, whether you're headed to Artesia, three hours away, Albuquerque, four hours, Chihuahua, about five hours, Austin, eight hours, Phoenix, six hours, to recognize that we are geographically isolated but for each other. And in that isolation, apart from the resources, the capital, the attention, and sometimes the policy that the rest of the country benefits from, we have come up with many of our own solutions, and a beautiful way of life that is not matched, in my opinion, of course I'm biased, by any part of the world. Those are my subjective feelings about El Paso. But by the numbers, we are the safest community, not just along the US-Mexico border, not just in the state of Texas, but anywhere in the United States, which blows a lot of people's minds when I share that with them in Washington DC. It runs completely counter to their impression of El Paso. In fact, I often get asked if I walk around with a bodyguard or carry a gun on the streets of El Paso. I don't have to because we live in the safest city in America. And what is even more mind-blowing, not for us because we know it and it is intuitive, but for my colleagues in Congress, is that safety is in large part because of, and not in spite of, our connection to Mexico, a significant number of migrant families who live here, whose sole purpose is to get ahead, to provide for their kids, to contribute to this country and the communities in which they live, to share and contribute to the American dream, something that is absolutely beautiful, and connected to the fact that we're the safest city in America. I probably don't have to tell you, but net migration from Mexico is now zero, or has been for a number of years in a row. Northbound apprehensions coming through the US-Mexico border are among their lowest levels ever, including those asylees fleeing Central America. On every subjective or objective level that we can look at, measure, or take into account, this is a thriving, successful community left to its own devices. But we are not. We, as I said earlier, suffer, enjoy, live through federal policy made in DC by people who don't have the perspective of the border that disproportionately impacts us. And so post-9/11, in this community, it has become increasingly difficult for those 30 million crossers a year to cross that bridge and do so in a way in which there's shown respect and dignity. It has become incredibly difficult for migrant families and asylees and refugees to be treated with that same respect and dignity. And confoundedly, at a time where you have the lowest level of northbound crossings, the lowest level of northbound apprehensions, you have 600 miles of wall, you're spending $18 billion a year to secure the border, you double the size of the Border Patrol from 10,000 to 20,000. You've secured this mother more than you can secure anything imaginable. You have among the highest number of migrant deaths despite all of this security. Perhaps we have to conclude in part because of all the security. So out of what I've just described to you, out of that frustration, out of that appreciation for what is extraordinary and unique and beautiful about our community, Representative Pierce and I relied on the wisdom and the intelligence and the best ideas of the communities that we represent, and proposed a bill that would force the federal law enforcement agencies that operate in our community to treat all of us, citizen and non-citizen alike, with the dignity and respect that we are owed as human beings. It would provide accountability to ensure that anyone who feels or knows that they have not been treated with that deserved respect and dignity has recourse to accountability for the officer or the agent at whose hands they were mistreated, that there is a complaint process that is transparent, that is resolvable, and that changes ultimately not just the conduct of the agents and the officers here, but the policy and the operations of the larger enforcement agencies that operate on the border. One of the things a number of people who don't live in El Paso may not understand is that the constitutional rights that you enjoy in Washington DC, in Chicago, Illinois, and Minneapolis, Minnesota, are not regularly found here on the US-Mexico border because, to some degree, they're suspended when you cross that border, whether you're a US citizen or not. You are subject to questioning and interrogation, to search and seizure, and to violation of your person. And I can give you some incredibly sad graphic examples of that, that run completely counter to our constitutional protections. And so our premise for this bill is that if you have law enforcement operating to the tune of $18 billion a year, affecting millions of people who live along the US-Mexico and the Canada-US border every year, with extraordinary powers not found anywhere else in the United States, there must be accountability, there must be oversight, and there must be an actionable mandate to treat every single person that they encounter with respect and with dignity. It's a bill we introduced last Congress that we improved, this Congress reintroduced again just last week. A bill is bipartisan in nature that we hope will show the rest of Congress and the rest of the country that it is possible for Democrats and Republicans, from people who actually live and experience and know and understand the border better than anyone else, to write and to find a policy that is going to shape and affect the border going forward. So I'll leave it at that so that we have time to answer some questions and hear a statement from Congressman Pierce. But again, thank you for your interest, your attention in this, and to all who contributed on the legislation, who are here today, thank you for your work. Thank you.
Congressman, as you said, this is not a Democratic issue. This is an issue that goes beyond parties. It belongs to our community. It belongs to the values of America. And I think this is why we believe this is the best president. Never in the past, we had a legislation like that, a legislation that talks about human rights, American values, transparency, complaining processes, professionalism at the border. And I don't know if we have that anywhere in the nation as such. So Congressman Pierce couldn't be here today. I think we always appreciate what he has done. Sometimes there are many, many issues in the agenda. That's why we appreciate your presence. But also, he was really going to actually produce a message for us, and we're gonna ask Peter to tell us a little bit about Mr. Pierce.
Absolutely. Thank you Fernando and Congressman O'Rourke. It's always an honor. It's an honor to be here with you. My name is Peter Iban. I am the outreach director for US Congressman Steve Pierce. Grew up in Mendez Valley. It's always a good opportunity to spend some time with, it's hard to call Congressman, but the word, it's like I've known Beto since we were in high school. It's fun. You all have a very, very, very good representative here in El Paso. And so again, I'd like to also thank, we have Congressman Steve Pierce, all the work that Border Network for Human Rights is doing. So we'd like to thank Fernando and Robert and Ester, and you all have done great work in beating this effort. And Congressman O'Rourke pointed out that this bill could not have been possible without your leadership, without your leadership that you're doing for Fernando, and bringing these important issues of justice, rights, and our way of life and the border, and share the all of it to our colleagues in Washington DC. So I'm sorry Congressman cannot be here this afternoon, but he wishes to express his best regards, and he has a statement that I'd like to share with you. If we could play that, and again, thank you once again for the solidarity.
There are two levels that I'd like to visit with you on. First of all, the bill itself, but secondly, the importance of different parties working together. Everybody in the entire United States is sick of the partisanship in Washington. They just want the two parties, they understand we're on this different parties, but when we get here, they want us to work together. And that's the piece of this bill that I think really sets the tone for the national stage. Congressman O'Rourke and I probably differ on most policy issues, and especially most of immigration, and yet, both of us approach this with an understanding that even though we have different perceptions, that we can find things and we should be finding things to make the situation better in the country and at the border. And so we came together on this bill that really arises from the people. People in my district, a very rural, southern, conservative district, were complaining that the Border Patrol was insensitive. They would run through their fences and tear those up. The cows would walk out. They would leave gates open and again, cattle wandering along the highway would sometimes be hit with cars. So it was just this insensitive kind of arrogance of the agencies. Meanwhile, in Congressman O'Rourke's district, right there at the border with the heavy crossing in El Paso, people were complaining about a different thing with the same aspect. Border Patrol agents who were insensitive, gun, and just uncaring, a system that sometimes just committed violations of conscience. And so the two of us came together and said, yes, we can solve this in a fairly easy way. Let's number one, make people accountable, the agents themselves, and by the way, they are many times the people working in the government agencies are saying, yes, we would like that, but also if they have problems, let's go ahead and have training for them. And in that way, we can accentuate that. Both parties coming together said, treat people right. It's just a matter of fairness. It's a matter of human decency. And yes, we in the government can be decent as we go through it. Sometimes we find people doing wrong, sometimes we don't. But the approach should always be that people are people and have a right to be treated correctly. So that's the important emphasis of the bill. I just want to thank you all at this conference today for participating and for letting your voices be heard, because really, it is when people out there, the grassroots, begin to speak back to Washington, that both parties will work together. Again, just want to say thanks to Congressman O'Rourke for being willing to work across the aisle with me. I think that this is the pattern for the future, the pattern that the American people are looking for, the people in Congressman O'Rourke's district, and the people in my district. God bless you all. Thanks for your hard work. Appreciate it.
Now, we would love and like to open it up for questions for the congressmen, whether it's about content of the legislation, or any thoughts that you have in regards to how these processes came together, how this bipartisanship happened in the region, any of the thoughts that you have, you could have about how this, how can we move this process forward in terms of working with communities and working with members of Congress. So please come forward, we'll prepare some of your questions. I'll ask Congressman, if you can just outline some of the major areas of the legislation, what the bill contains, what is the essence of the bill.
So there are a number of aspects of this bill that are changed to current US policy. One very important part, supported by the Border Patrol Union itself, is additional training, the kind of training frankly that Border Network for Human Rights has been providing to the Border Patrol in El Paso on cultural sensitivities. And it sounds so commonsensical and obvious, but just ensuring that the people with whom they're working and interacting are treated as the human beings that they are. And sometimes that can be lost when that person is seen primarily as a threat or a potential threat. And I often cite El Paso to my colleagues and Fernando of DNHR, and the Border Patrol here in El Paso as the model for the rest of the country. I think because of that engagement, the advocacy from DNHR, the willingness on the Border Patrol's part to listen and to have their officers trained to this level of sensitivity, you've seen the number of reportable incidents in El Paso drop significantly in the years they've engaged with DNHR. So we essentially want to take that El Paso model and apply it nationally through training. There's also a new position created in this bill of an ombudsman in the Department of Homeland Security. Right now, when somebody crosses one of our ports of entry and feels that they have been mistreated, they can submit a complaint, but it is like submitting a complaint at Boobies Cafeteria in suggestion boxes. There's no tracking, no certainty that that box is ever cleared out, that it's read, that you will be heard. And there is, in the hierarchy of Customs and Border Protection, there's also a perverse consequence sometimes for somebody making a complaint. You typically find yourself complaining to that officer's superior, who then has almost complete discretion and control over your status at the moment in the country, whether you will be searched further, whether a person will be searched, whether you will be searched internally. And we have heard many horror stories of that taking place. And so an ombudsman and a tracking and accountability process for each complaint ensures the legislation that no complaint lingers for greater than a year, that every single one of them is tracked and accounted for, and that a comprehensive report is published at the end of the year detailing all the different kinds of complaints, their status, how they were resolved. And then that then has an implication on policy, that ombudsman is able to make policy recommendations based on the type, frequency, volume, and kinds of complaints that are coming through. There is a council or a board that then also works to oversee the implementation of these new policies and positions on the border comprised of people who live and work on both borders, the northern border and the southern border. And that policy group, or board, or commission, has the ability to review all the data, information, complaints, the job that the ombudsman is doing, and then to make specific policy recommendations that are within the rulemaking authority of the Secretary of the Department of Homeland Security. And that secretary has only so much time to either implement those rules or policy changes, or to provide a written explanation of why he or she thinks it's not in the best interest of the Department of the people that they interact with and serve. And the idea behind all of this, and the reason I think that it enjoys support from advocacy groups, from civil liberties organizations, and from the National Border Patrol Council, is that transparency and accountability is going to be good for everyone involved. It's going to be good for that border crosser who right now has no recourse if they are treated like a king or treated like a dog. It has transparency for the agents and the officers, because I'll tell you, most of them are good people, working honest jobs, trying to do the right thing. But when you have agents and officers who are not, and there are some of those as well, it besmirches the reputation and our ability to trust those entire agencies and organizations. And the good people within DHS, CDP officers and the Border Patrol agents, want that kind of transparency and accountability for the bad men and women who are working in their midst. They want them out, and they want them accountable. And lastly, you and I, together with our fellow US citizens, spent $18 billion a year on what we're doing here in El Paso and other parts of the border and the northern border. And from a fiduciary perspective, you want to make sure that that money is well spent, that you're accounting for the dollars that you're paying. From a constitutional and civil liberties perspective, these extraordinary police powers that exist at our borders, to search and seize and hold people without probable cause, without an attorney, regardless of their citizenship, to include US citizens, you want some oversight and control over that. So those are the basic aspects of the bill. And again, I would love to claim ownership and authorship. Those literally, those criteria or those aspects of the bill I just described came literally directly from Border Network for Human Rights, from Dr. Hayman, from others who have been working on, thinking about these issues far longer than I have. We have a question.
I want to congratulate you on the performance you have for the community of El Paso and Ciudad Juarez, really. But your concern about transparency concerns me with respect to the Trans-Pacific project that the government, that President Obama was projecting. We know what happened with NAFTA, that treaty that was not transparent, that was passed on fast track, and this is also on fast track. So we know that the migration augmented tremendously with NAFTA that was inaugurated in 1994. What's going to happen with this Trans-Pacific agreement?
Great question. For those who can hear the questions about the Transpartnership, or TPP, it's the trade agreement that we're currently negotiating with 11 other Pacific nations in this hemisphere and in Asia, who represent about 40% of the global economy. Let me address two things. The migration and refugee impacts that are going to potentially occur if TPP moves forward, and then TPA, which was the fast track to allow the president to continue the negotiation. I voted for TPA, and let me tell you why. Someone argued that we should not have fast track authority when we're negotiating trade deals, that we would want the particulars, whether they concern the tariffs that are connected to different imports from different countries, whether they are the environmental standards, the labor standards, the public health standards, the human rights standards, to be decided within the committees, in the House of Representatives, and in the Senate. And I'm an institutionalist, I believe, in Congress, as a authority in the first article of the Constitution, and that has a lot of appeal to me. But I also have to admit that I think it is, for the most part, unworkable to negotiate anything with that many countries at that significance within all of those committees. And then I'm also a pragmatist to the degree that if we acknowledge that each one of those committees is chaired by a Republican, and that our chances to include environmental and labor and public health safeguards are significantly diminished, with all due respect to Congressman Pierce, through Republican leadership versus the leadership of someone in President Obama, whose views on the environment and climate change and labor protections and public health are much more in tune to mine, I think, my community's than anyone else's. I felt it important to give him the authority to conduct these negotiations, because the alternative, whether it was Congress or an unknown successor, was just not as palatable. In terms of TPP, the Trans-Pacific Partnership is not yet negotiated. They're in the final stages of negotiation. I haven't read draft copies of the agreement. I haven't read the final agreement because there is not one. But I am acutely interested in the economic impacts to this hemisphere, and specifically, for example, I have signed on to, in fact, I've not just signed on to, I wrote a letter to the US Trade Representative, Michael Fronman, on the rule on yard forwarding, because textiles and the textile industry is so critically important to the northern triangle countries, from whom we saw such an outpouring of asylum seekers, refugees, and migrants last year. And this is precisely the wrong time to create negative economic pressure in those countries that would exacerbate an already intolerable situation for the families who are living there. So I'm acutely interested in what the TPP contains when it comes to yard forwarding and its impact on the textile industry. I'm also meeting with the ambassadors from those countries, El Salvador, Honduras, Guatemala, as I have been meeting with the ambassador from Mexico, because I think it's incredibly important we gain their perspective. And it's not just the ambassadors, it's also the advocacy groups, the public interest groups from those countries and our countries. So whether it is this issue of economic impact in our hemisphere, environmental impact, labor impact, or economic opportunity for US manufacturers, I will be reading the TPP with this or economic opportunity for U.S. manufacturers, uh, I will be reading the TPP with this community's, our country's, and this hemisphere's interests and mine, I'll make a decision accordingly. But thank you for the question.
Thank you Congressman O'Rourke. My name is Martha Parton, and here with Border and Immigration. And I have a question. Refugees are examined and released by immigration. Why are they taken aside and here and tatted down over and over? Please work to stop this practice. The children witness is tatted down and is traumatizing for them. Please work to eliminate and put them on. Thank you.
As I, uh, particularly agree with you, and there's two things that we can do in that. One, we can specifically, uh, ask all federal law enforcement agencies in this area to address this practice and to agree they have discretion, uh, in the performance of securing, whether it's a land port, an airport, uh, or, or any area that they're involved with, the transfer of detainees, for example, between ICE and Border Patrol, and Border Patrol perhaps to, uh, a, uh, relief group like Annunciation House, that each of those people is treated with the utmost dignity and respect. It's certainly possible to do that without sacrificing security. Uh, so that's, that's one thing that we can do that does not await legislation. But the second thing, and it's the reason, the primary reason I'm here, is to tell you that this bill introduces accountability today where none exists, and ensures that when people are treated this way, people who do not have an advocate and do not have recourse within the parent system, which is closed and, uh, is, is not transparent, uh, have one going forward. So, we'll work on both fronts, and we'll certainly bring that specific issue to the attention of federal law enforcement here in El Paso. Thank you.
Congressman, I just wanted to thank you. And Congressman Pierce, for introducing, uh, we greatly appreciate it. I have a, uh, maybe a fourth important question. First, I want to note the reception of it among fellow members of Congress. Um, the other issue that I wanted to ask you about is, we know that most of the federal agents are very, very good people, but we also see in report after report that about ten percent of the people that are encountered by, you know, the detention system and the Border Patrol have been physically abused, reported that over many years, thousands of cases, and about twenty-five percent have reported verbal abuse. And we've just seen a report by the Jesuit Refugee Service that shows that there's no problem with even doing criminal background checks, uh, among, among Border Patrol. And I wanted you to just respond to that because, you know, that if you're not doing criminal background checks of people that have ultimate absolute power over the people that they're dealing with, oftentimes out of sight, that's a huge problem, and it might explain some of the abuses that I'm seeing over the years.
You know, there's, there's so much to the question that you asked, the second question that you asked, that extends beyond how we treat detainees within the border enforcement complex. Uh, I, I really think it extends to a much larger problem we have in this country with our infatuation with imprisonment and severe sentences. The fact that we represent five percent of the globe's population, twenty-five percent of its incarcerated population, and that we are unbelievably outsourcing, um, these core functions of the state to for-profit corporations who contribute to candidates who have, uh, positions in Congress that then have sway of the policy that affects sentencing guidelines. And, uh, you can see what a vicious cycle this is and becomes, and why it must stop. And I, I think that extends to how we treat people who come in, uh, to this country from other parts of the world who pose no threat to us. And, and I share this example far and wide of Annunciation House. At a time that South Texas and McAllen, Brownsville, you're beyond capacity in terms of federal detention to house families and children, they began to board those families on the planes for El Paso, where they were, and this is a beautiful story, I think, in terms of how the government, federal law enforcement can work with, uh, local organizations, where they were transferred from, uh, Border Patrol custody to ICE custody, directly to Annunciation House, to the chapel at Leto, uh, where they were taken care of without costing the taxpayer a single dime, without putting anyone behind bars, alleviating the extreme anxiety and stress that these families, uh, felt, and connecting them with their relatives in the interior, uh, who would, again, at no going cost, house them, feed them, clothe them going forward, uh, pending their court time. Uh, what a beautiful model. I mean, that model should be the law. That should be how we treat people who pose no threat to, to this country. Uh, but you also speak to, uh, something that so many of the people in positions of public trust succumb to, including our president, which is how they view and fear the border. When the president was making his speech about, uh, DACA and his immigration principles, the first principle from the president's lips was, "Before we do anything else, we must secure the border." Which is just crazy to me. Uh, I don't know how much more you can secure the border. You can certainly run headlong to law to issue returns, where you can spend billions more and you get only, I don't know, I was going to say marginal, uh, security improvements. I think you start to decrease security. Fernando's made this point more eloquently than I ever could. If you, if you want to secure the border, then you pass immigration reform to treat people with respect and dignity, ensure that they feel comfortable working with law enforcement, living in our community, participating. Uh, it's counterintuitive to Washington DC, including our president, unfortunately. Makes so much sense when, when you, when you talk to the people who live there. Uh, so, out of that mindset came the Comprehensive Immigration Bill that was proposed and passed in the Senate last Congress. This was in, uh, two thousand and fourteen. Uh, and, you know, to some degree, we all liked it, right? It was a pathway to citizenship. Um, it was a recognition of eleven or twelve million people who were living and contributing to this country and in our communities. Uh, but it also called for a doubling of the Border Patrol. From twenty thousand agents, remember, we were at ten thousand agents ten years ago. Twenty thousand agents today to forty thousand agents, at a cost of forty-three billion dollars. And it wasn't just, uh, representatives such as myself, or Phil and Bella from Brownsville, or others who were close to this, but it was the National Border Patrol Council. We had Border Patrol representatives who came in and said, "The last time we ramped up and doubled, we didn't vet fully the people that we were bringing on." And if you do this again, the consequences to the force, to the people with whom they interact, uh, are going to be, uh, absolutely tragic. And I'll tell you, this is one instance in which the border won. Uh, Congressman Bella, myself, and others, bandied together, worked with our leadership, uh, within the caucus, and were able to defeat the Corcoran Amendment from the Senate bill stripped out of the House version. Now, it was a partial victory because we got a more perfect immigration bill, but an immigration bill that nonetheless did not see the light of day because the Speaker would not bring it to the floor for a vote, even though it had, uh, numerical superiority, uh, if ever tested. Uh, and so, um, just want you to know that we recognize the issue. We've been able to change the proposals coming forward based on that concern. And to your first question, just very quickly, in a sentence, the reception to the bill Congressman Pierce and I have introduced has been positive, but it won't go anywhere until that margin mindset, to which even the president subscribes about securing the border first, is addressed. Because everyone says, "We love your bill, makes a lot of sense, we want to treat people with respect and dignity, but first, let's secure the border."
Okay. Okay, well, unfortunately, uh, what I'm entitled is outreach director, so I'm not really authorized to speak on behalf of the congressman. And, and so, so, and, and also, unfortunately, not in Washington, you see, you see the perception of the bill on the floor, so we appreciate Congressman Roar's feedback on that. But as he points out, as our congressman points out, is when the people in the district start to really make the voice, like the way you are, and we spread that nationwide, that's when Washington starts to listen. And so, I can, I can share with you that in my experience, I, I, I work in, in our district here, and the perception I'm getting from the bill is, is very positive, on both the Republican and Democrat side. And mind you, when I'm out in the community, this isn't about politics. We don't represent the party. When we're there, we're representing Congress, we're representing the people. And the people in Mexico are recognizing that, that this is not a Republican or Supreme Court issue, rather it's an issue that places all of us on the border as individuals. So I've been getting, uh, positive feedback in the community. But I, I would share with you that the more events you have, the balance, the, the remarks, you get a lot of, uh, you really get a lot of, uh, visibility on, on the numbers you put together, that's when it starts to trickle down to Washington, and then we can continue the work in our areas so we can get some, some positive outcomes out of, out of the bill. So, I'd like you to keep, keep putting this, uh, bill on the line like. We'd be happy to work with you, continue supporting that this bill is something that gets more attention up in Washington. So we'd be happy to work with you on that.
Hi, uh, my name is Gabriela Casas Nueva, and, um, I really want to thank you Congressman Roar and Congressman Pierce for working together on this important piece of legislation. Um, I really want to mention that this bill is unique because it contains human rights language. And my question is, uh, the bill is going to be introduced. It was introduced before. And can you share with us what are your strategies to make sure that this bill advances through the different committees? I mean, what's going to be different today?
It is a really interesting time right now in Washington. We, we had at the beginning, uh, so, so last Congress, I was on the Homeland Security Committee, the House Homeland Security Committee. And I supported, I, I supported a bill that was deeply flawed, uh, but I felt like was, uh, the best of a number of bad options. It was, uh, it was a, you know, border bill, border security bill. And I was able to get some human rights language into the bill through some amendments. Uh, I was able to, uh, get some language in that would reduce wait times on our, on our bridges, uh, provide, uh, cultural sensitivity training, literally lifted the words out of the, the bill idea that we have here. And was able to get that in, and because it proved enough that I could support it, um, I voted for it, as did every single member of the House Homeland Security Committee, Republican, Democrat. That bill, as tougher than I would like it to be, uh, but fully supported on a bipartisan basis, was never going to the vote, so there was no vote on it on the House floor because it just wasn't tough enough. This year, they brought a bill forward that I couldn't even, by holding my nose, vote for, uh, out of the Homeland Security Committee. It stripped away everything that I had had in the last session of Congress, and set up forward operating bases on our border. Like, the forward operating bases that you have outside of Kabul, uh, outside of Baghdad, you would have them outside of El Paso, outside of San Luis Obispo, outside of San Francisco. Uh, that, uh, put more LIMs and drones and, uh, I mean, I'm only half joking here, but, you know, uh, robots that shoot lasers and, you know, all, all sorts of, of bad things. And that bill was not given vote because the hardcore faction of the majority, uh, could not support it because it did not go far enough. So what is the strategy in an environment like that? I think our best hope is that when something does come forward, a Comprehensive Immigration Bill, a, a border bill that the president signals that he can sign. Frankly, uh, and again, President Company excluded, when, when the majority of party is really interested in governing and not just messaging, uh, about the border, for example, about immigration, and wants to get something done that the president can sign, will call compromises and concessions on our end and compromises and concessions on the other. Uh, I want Representative Pierce and I to be in the right place, to have had enough of the conversations with the, um, relevant members of the Judiciary Committee and the Homeland Security Committee, so that when that bill gets to the floor, it contains the best of the ideas that came from our communities. What I'm saying, in other words, is that the chance of this bill standalone passing are statistically close to zero. The chances of good ideas from this bill ultimately becoming law are much, much better. And I've had to, uh, accept that that's how Washington works. It's less Schoolhouse Rock and, um, more a horror movie. Uh, and so bits and pieces of something good can make it into something, uh, far larger. And, and I, and I hope that that is the fate of, of this bill. But you look at significant legislation, uh, that has changed this country over time, civil rights, uh, legislation, healthcare legislation, it's humbling, but, but it in many cases takes decades. And I hope that's not the fate of, of this bill. Uh, but, but I think we have to prepare ourselves for a very long and engaged fight to ensure that ultimately becomes law. And as Peter said, I think it's organizing in meetings like this one, uh, but it is also ensuring that we're not just talking to each other. Uh, Republicans need to understand that this is, uh, from a fiduciary perspective, this is a much better check on taxpayer-funded dollars. From a constitutional perspective, it ensures that our civil rights and our constitutional rights in some reasonable search and seizure are protected. Uh, and so we're talking to those Republicans for whom those are primary concerns. So that's, that's our strategy right now, is to make sure that when something happens, we are ready and that enough of the right people know about it, are interested in it, are ready to put it in place.
Maybe say, then, uh, just to conclude and wrap up, uh, this comments by Congressman Roar, is that we're going to need your support in your community, in your parish, in your diocese, for this legislation, even if it's not a legislation that you do not see as affecting your communities. Indeed, this is affecting your communities. Most of the people, many of them cross the border at some point, either by plane, through the land, through air, through waters. So this is affecting all borders from Canada to the southern border. So we will, uh, we'll chat to you because if we want this to look forward, we need to actually educate other communities beyond the border, uh, to understand that this is important and we're not only believing what Trump is saying, for example, that we can actually believe that there's a new narrative, there's a better way to deal with issues at the border than the ones that are being presented nationally. So with that, I conclude this panel and this presentation. We thank, uh, we want to thank Congressman Roar for his time, obviously so Congressman Pierce also. They have done a very, very good job, so, uh, please, uh, give them a hand.